So I'm waiting for being here today. And it's an exciting day because we've got all these, some of the finest young people in Hopkins County are in the courtroom today. And so we're so grateful to have you here. And so we're going to start our, our meeting. It's nine o'clock AM. Are we on the record from this time forward, Courtney? And nine o'clock AM Monday, December 12th, 2022. The reason I do this, ladies and gentlemen, is because this is a permanent record of, of history that is being made today and will go into the courthouse records. And so I have to introduce it this way. We're here at the Commissioners Court at the courthouse on the square in Silver Springs. Let's stand for an invitation. Wait, would you please stand?
First, pray. Dear heaven Father, we just come to you this time and we give you thanks for this opportunity to meet here today. We want to ask a special blessing to all these young folks here today for the accomplishments that they have made in their school careers. Lord, they are a blessing to Hopkins County. These young adults are going to be our leaders someday. And we thank you for placing them in our midst and so we just ask for blessings throughout their life. We want to thank you for the training you brought to our land. We want to ask your blessings upon all first responders, officers, men and women bringing home safely. And we want to thank you for your salvation in Jesus Christ and all these things that are laid. Amen.
Amen. Pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. You may be seated here if you can. The first thing we'll do today, for God, we're so crowded, is we'll get these young people in and out. Because even though we'd love you to stay for the whole meeting, it won't be a very exciting meeting after y'all leave, actually. But I want to first bring up the Lady Hornets of Miller Grove. So all of the runners from the Miller Grove come on up, from the one, the girls' team, come on up. And pictures are very much right and appreciated. So if you're a parent or a school, get, get up here and I'll give you a proclamation to y'all. And the proclamation brief was follows. Whereas the state country, cross-country meeting of the UIL was held at Old Sudners Park in Round Rock, Texas on Saturday, November 5th, 2022. And whereas the Lady Hornets of the Miller Grove Independent School District cross-country train ran in the two-month course of the Class 1A cross-country meeting. Whereas, and raise your hand as I call you back, Shelly Straisner, Holly Harrow, Alara Sorano. Did I say it right? Sorry. All right. Well, we should have practiced really, but anyway. Tell me. Okay, well, is that clear? Sorry about that. Phyllis Robertson. Okay. Jibberlin Hensley. Avery McIntell.
McIntell.
McIntell, thank you. Aleah Satella. There you are. Along with their coaching staff are recognized for their hard work and determination and team effort. And whereas the Lady Hornets received state champion recognition as the best girls' cross-country team in Texas. And here's a picture of them. And I say now therefore, I Robert Newsom Hopkins County Judge do hereby call all citizens of Hopkins County to proudly applause the outstanding achievements of their exceptional athletes for their accomplishments as champions for the state of Texas in the Class 1A State Cross-Country League of 2022. Don't look that way now.
Joe, a little more to the right. There you go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three.
Now just stand here for just a moment because we have one more proclamation that has to do with the amazing year that you've had. Whereas Hopkins County Commissioners Court recognizes the accomplished runner, Shelly Straisner of the Miller Grove Independent School District for her success in the UIL cross-country meeting held Saturday, November 5th, 2022 at Old Sudners Park in Round Rock, Texas. Whereas his valuable athletes' efforts displayed determination, perseverance, and remarkable results toward obtaining her position on the podium as silver medalist for the community and the state of Texas. And whereas Lady Hornets, Shelly successfully crossed the finish line of the two-month competition with an official time of 12:26. And now therefore, I Robert Newsom Hopkins County Judge do hereby appeal to all the people of Hopkins County to honorably commend Shelly Straisner for her fine performance and accomplishment as silver medalist of the 2022 Class 1A UIL State Cross-Country Meet. Congratulations. One more time, we'll do it again.
One, two, three. And then can I get him on the porch?
That'd be great. May want to get some more pictures here, Alan, before you're at the courthouse. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, ladies, and congratulations. Next, we have the Miller Grove Boys on this line. Coach, you just keep coming back up. Congratulations. Whereas on Saturday, November 5th, 2022, UIL State Cross-Country meeting has placed at Old Sudners Park in Round Rock, Texas. And whereas the Hopkins County Commissioners Court proudly recognizes the team effort and self-determination of each member of the Miller Grove Independent School District cross-country team as displaying perseverance and effort toward a common goal. And whereas the Athletic Hornets successfully achieved the title and both deserved place upon the podium as the state runner-ups of the 2022 cross-country competition. And now therefore, I Robert Newsom Hopkins County Judge do invite all Hopkins County citizens to join us in applauding the great effort and valiant perseverance of the boys' cross-country team of Miller Grove Independent School District in the Class 1A State Cross-Country meeting for 2022. Congratulations.
Wow. Smile. One, two, and three. Two, and three.
Now, before y'all sit down, Coach, how many miles, I know last summer they were running.
Yes, they ran.
It was really, really hot and they were running.
They started getting ready for the upcoming cross-country season. They run the upper tier level where they're like 60 miles a week, 50, 60 miles in the country, down to 40, 50 on the lower half. And on the greater end, then the girls, they're like 30, 40, 50 miles a week.
Wow. That's amazing. And y'all understand that was, we had a heat spell last summer that just about got all of us in these towns around 160 miles a week. So that is an amazing thing. And I'm just, these are real athletes and you guys are accomplished. We appreciate you so very much. One more hand for them. All right. Well, thank y'all so much. We have one more, of course. We have the state champions running, running this group right here. So South Hill, come on up. Proclamation, whereas the South Hill Lions met on Saturday, November 5th, 2022, compete at the UIL State Cross-Country Events Southern at Old Sudners Park in Round Rock, Texas. And whereas the Hopkins County Commissioners Court proudly commends the runners for the United goal, your relentless team members, and shared bound set of championship accomplishments during all workouts as well as during competition. And whereas along with the leadership of Team Sanders, we congratulate the underclassmen in becoming one with their experienced members to produce strength beyond their own as individuals. And whereas the Lions successfully conquered all opposition, resulting in a well-deserved place upon the podium as champions of the 2022 cross-country competition. And now therefore, I Robert Newsom Hopkins County Judge do hereby invite all to acknowledge the admirable performance of the boys' cross-country team of the South Hill of Independent School District in the Class 1A State Cross-Country Meet for 2022. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Ready, one, two, three. Two, and three.
Okay, Coach, I'll ask you the same question. What did your boys do to prepare for a state championship?
We started viking track, it was over about April. Every morning, basically, from then till, especially weekend, I'd be on the ground. But I'm not saying it's a big problem. Basically, it's longer than the state were. We started at grade school, six o'clock, 5:40. 5:40, 5:40, a week to eat. So really to sacrifice your son, you know, it's very awesome. We're very grateful.
Well, congratulations, guys. I know it doesn't come easy. And again, as we talked about a moment ago, all summer long and into the fall, we had a warm time and you guys were out there pushing. That's why you had the success that you had. So congratulations on a state championship. Donna, you would like to go out and get a picture off the front of courthouse steps? And we've got a meeting to continue. So thank you for everyone who's here. And we're going to county business. Now we're going to go into a consent agenda and flipping then a previous meeting, meeting event of November 14, 2022, for regular meetings, two court sessions, November 14 and November 28, 2022. In addition, there's, the court considered approved a request on spectrum charge to construct and for the placement of aerial and underground conduit in fiber on County Road 3511, 4738, 4740, 4744, and 4749. Joe Price from Precinct 4, did you approve those?
I did approve those, Mr. [inaudible].
All right. And Commissioner of Precinct 3, Wade Barclay. On County Road 3511.
I'm going to nail them quick at this time.
Do you want to speak to that?
There's some issues out there that have been taking place in the work zones and where they have placed some of their equipment. It's not in the right place for the rideways and haven't cleaned up the rideways after going and trampled tree leaves. So I've called all their attention to that two weeks ago and nothing's been done about that so far. I don't know whether it could be effective. But if there's a safety issue out there, it's on the corner market roads, well, not using good safety brakes. There's no warning glass, even at night time, I'm going through there. And to work through that, to work with no, no safe, not complete district yards or on each of that, the orange cone, not a trailer, there's no signal lights whatsoever on the truck. And personally, stuff down there, one night, turned my flashlights on, sort of, but it took, took a dip, didn't get out there and talk to them. And that's, it's not that bad on the cattle roads, but on that corner marker, no way out there.
And this was on state, rather than?
This was on corner marker.
And that need to talk, takes that requires then to have a permanent, you know?
Then there's no markings on these trucks. Contractors out there, looked like they're driving, they're doing a pickup, the car was trying to park. And so you don't want to do this, sit there and sound rubbery.
I agree. You brought that up to them.
We did. We did have a meeting. I also wanted to throw a phone call to them. Maybe this will get their attention and sort of, a little bit better job. It's not satisfied.
Anything else, comments? With the exception then of County Road 3511 with the spectrum charter construction, do I hear a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Have a motion from Joe Price, do we hear a second? Second from Wade Barclay. And again, this is with the exception of 3511 for the construction crew. All in favor say aye. All opposed, unanimous. Next, the court consider citizen comments, citizen comments. There being none, will we belong, the court to consider and approve the First Amendment by and between Hopkins County and Pine Forest Solar 1? At the same time, there's also, next out is the court to consider and approve the First Amendment by and between Hopkins County and Pine Forest Hybrid 1, LCLC. I'll take those two up in this time. And today, we have April with us. And April, would you like to speak with us?
Yes, I know there's a lot of paperwork with this, but I just wanted to provide an update and give you the overview. So for both the solar and hybrid, we expanded the land that we could possibly utilize for the project. And we also moved out our operations date to December of 2024. Previously, it was kind of a mix between 2023 and 2024. So we've got it all kind of cleaned up. They all are the same. They all have the same operations dates, so it should be a little simpler there. But in terms of when we're thinking about construction, we're hoping sometime next year, as we said before, supply chain, all the craziness in the world sometimes can change that. But that's what we're hoping for right now.
My question, I guess, would be, it's still on?
Yes, yes.
Or did you just beat up?
Yes. There's just a couple of things that influence moving that out, procurement in terms of getting steel and getting solar panels and things like that, having things out a little bit.
I'd like to ask a question. Hopkins County and Pine Forest Solar LLC, Pine Forest Hybrid LLC, is that two separate companies working jointly on this?
Yes. So the Pine Forest Solar is only the solar project. Pine Forest Hybrid, the name is a bit deceiving, but that's only if we do a battery, battery storage. And so they're both, they're two separate LLCs. They're both owned by their energy framework. And so that's, that's the relationship there.
So that's an if, and there if you?
The battery is an if. Yes. The solar panels is more of a when, the battery is, is an if, yeah.
Well, Chris, you're right, and I have a comment more important.
Yes, I will be there. Yeah. Yeah, we'll talk to you about mostly roads and driveways and make sure that you kind of know where we're, where we're working. But we'll, it won't just be me. It'll be our contractors, so they have all the details on those types of construction activities. Yeah, so look forward to doing that.
And April, you said, you said something about the reinvestment zone being larger?
Yes, yes. So the reinvestment zone, we've expanded it so that if we do acquire more land, and we have a couple more parcels, that we don't have to keep coming back to you and asking you to expand. It is very large now, but that just means that we won't have to keep asking you. As we talked about last time, reinvestment zones, they don't mean we can go anywhere and put solar panels. People still do have to choose to lease with us before they can, they would be part of the solar project. Just gives us some flexibility to know that it could be included in tax payments.
Any other questions? And we'll have a sheet for you. April, Christian thing?
Yes, it's mine.
And any other questions from anyone? All right. I have before us, the court consider the First Amendment, which is an extension between Pine Forest Solar 1 and Hopkins County. In addition to that, Hopkins County and Pine Forest Hybrid 1. Do I hear a motion to approve? So have a motion from Brad Anglin?
Second.
Second from Mickey Barker. All in favor say aye. All opposed, unanimous. And then we'll go to the reinvestment zone. The court to consider and approve the reinvestment zone with Pine Forest Solar 1 and authorize the county judge to enter to agreement on behalf of the county for an economic development project. Any other thing else you'd like to say to that, April? Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve? So have a motion from Brad Anglin, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second from Wade Barclay. All in favor say aye. All opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your time.
And we'll give this to the clerk so that she can have everything left. All right. Next, the court consider and approve the sales terms and conditions with Axon Enterprise Incorporated, the Hopkins County Sheriff's Office regarding the purchase of tasers. Who is speaking to that? Your name, your name for the?
Project, Sheriff's Office. We're looking at purchasing 10 new tasers, 10 holsters, 20 more cartridges, and then I believe they're providing 25, actually it's 25 active bi-part cartridges and 20 trademark units. The agreement with Axon is actually a installment agreement. It allows us to pay the tasers out instead of one month's sum upfront. I believe it is roughly $3,500 a year over the next.
I don't have the amount. I didn't see the paperwork. I think he gave it, maybe to Dawn for, is it in your package? Can you hand it?
Yes. I believe it's $3,500 a year for the next three or five years. Total price is roughly $17,000. Unfortunately, Axon is the only one that we can get the tasers through, with their trademark down. These will replace some broken tasers that were broken in service and then replace outdated tasers that have had faults and can't be fixed for what it would cost to get in.
The reason it's having to come through court is because it is an agreement that you're going to have to sign saying we'll make the payments, but the payments will come out of the sheriff's office budget and they have to.
Questions? Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve? So we have a motion from Joe Price, second.
Second.
Second from Wade Barclay. All in favor say aye. All opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Next, the court consider and approve the COLA, a cost of living for the Hopkins County Republican Land Shack.
This is for all retirees to be able to receive a raise this year. You have to make a decision by December 15th. And we brought it before y'all in our session and discussed the 7% COLA for any retiree. We had already budgeted for it back during budget sessions. So the funds are there and ready to be spent. We didn't know what the rates were going to come in at, but we did budget for enough. So it changed our retirement rate to 14.27, but that's still lower than what we're paying right now to give the retirees a raise. So the recommended raise would be 7%.
Question, discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve? No move.
Seconds.
Yes. If you want to approve, second. And Brad Anglin, second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, unanimous. Next, the court consider and approve the 2017 DynaPAC CP 1200, which is for Precinct 4.
Yes, sir. We're purchasing that. So far, all we've had is the type that we got, the contract requires a lot of room to turn it. So we've got that regular bit. This one, we won't have to use vehicles, driveways and stuff. It'll actually just go forward and back. Make a motion.
You want me to put them out here? It's 48, 68165.
One more time.
48, 68165. And it's, it's less than the threshold that have to get it, so he doesn't have to get it. He has the funds to purchase it outright.
Have a motion from Joe Price to approve. Do we hear a second? Second, Wade Barclay. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, unanimous. Next, the court recognize Constable Precinct 2, John Beadle. With him in the courtroom, the court house earlier today. He's in a court proceeding with, I believe, Judge Northgate. John Beadle for successfully completing 40 hours of continuing education with Constable Taylor, Bill Blackwood Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas. Next, the court to make a matter of record, the inspection acknowledgement of the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. Marshall, answer this.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to acknowledge that the Texas Commission on Fire Protection come out last week with the fire station for their bi-annual inspection. And we had zero efficiencies, which is fantastic news for the county. And that's the first time we've ever done that in our history. When I took over from the previous administration, that administration had 15 efficiencies. And since then, we've had two other inspections since I've been in this position. And we had two the first year and then one this last time, now zero. So that is a lot of hard work from every individual that works for Hopkins County Private Department and the Commissioners Court. So we do appreciate that and just like to acknowledge that. We had the official letter from the state that we also add to this attachment for the file. We didn't want to keep this on file for this time forward. We haven't been doing that in the past, so we're going to continue that.
And this is a year?
By, every two years. Every two, they come out. They can come out anytime they want to, but generally they will allow. Mike Russo, which is the chief of the fire commission, he's really changed a lot of things up. And it's become a lot more friendly. They used to, when they came out, they were going to find something wrong with you. And now they had a hard time finding something because we, Chief Skinner and all the guys at the fire station, they do a very good job on keeping the paperwork lined out. And the programs, they all allowed us to buy, help someone with our record keeping and things like that. So it's just really paying off now. And the fire commission has the authority from giving you a small fine up to completely shutting you down. So it's a, it's a very powerful commission. This would be a particular for the law enforcement side.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All right. That will go into the record, firmly record. The court to consider approving question amendments, and my, Frank?
I have several amendments. The first one's for the sheriff's office. We received funds for, from insurance proceeds for two wrecked vehicles that they had $12,880.80. And I'll be moving that into their repairs and maintenance to pay for the repairs on the vehicle. Precinct 4 had an insurance claim last year for the oil plant. We received $17,518.75. But because that came in last year and we didn't finish paying for all the bills until this year, I'll be getting that from fund balance. The funds did come in right at the end of last year. So I need to move 17, 518, 75 into your repairs and maintenance to be able to pay for those invoices. Precinct 1 received funds.
Precinct 1 received funds from Greenview Cemetery for paving of a parking lot, $22,059.96. And I'll be moving that into your road building. And then Precinct 1 had Deloitte funds left over. Deloitte was the oil spill, and they had paid us to repair roads. He had $11,186 left over in his last year budget, and I need to move that into his this year budget so that he can pay for the repairs. So 11,186 from the fund balance will go into your this year.
Any other question or discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendments and my, Frank?
Move.
Mickey Barker, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Greg Anglin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Next, the court to act on payment of bills, revenues, and expenses, payroll, and financial statements. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I need to pay the bill and payroll.
All right. Wade Barclay make a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Joe Price, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Next, grants, donations, contracts, personnel matters, disposal of assets.
I'm going to be disposing of a tobacco that was destroyed by a fire. It probably happened first year, but I'll probably utilize it to express fault responsibility. It's a salvage, a salvage machine right there, so I'm going to do that after I get rid of it. It's a case, I V, super.
Super M?
L or L or N? That's pretty good.
One of the yet.
Well, so you'll give me that.
I'll give it to you.
Sure. I'd like to say or ask y'all's opinion if, if you think we got with Auctioneer Express, if we all landed at the same time and got rid of any of your equipment that we had, or if we need to spread it out.
That would be a good idea.
To do it all for you.
It would, it would be better for me if y'all did it all at once.
Well, I wouldn't make it certain, you.
Wait, if they add in the newspaper, and there's a lot of steps to take, so it would be cost efficient to the county if you would do it all at the same time. Plus, everything would be on the website at the same time. It would.
I agree with you.
Let's talk to Auction Rich, please, and see what makes the difference, if y'all have anything.
But we do have one item that's specifically mentioned, so we do need a vote to dispose of the asset. Do I hear, is that a motion, Wade?
Yes, I'll, I'll approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Joe Price, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. I'm looking around, is there any other business before the court? Any other business before the court? All right, with that, I'll be open to a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
Have a motion from Greg Anglin, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Wade Barclay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. It is 9:35. Now, at 10 o'clock, the band is probably already gathering outside. At 10 o'clock, we're going to honor the Silver Springs Band, who may place the horse in state. And so they'll be here in a few minutes. They will not try to get 100 of them in this court. So we'll go outside. So we're going to the work session at this time at 9:35. Thank you.